Good evening. This is the meeting of the regular school committee meeting. Could we please rise and salute the flag?
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Could the clerk please call the roll?
Mr. Conway, Mayor Elliott.
Here.
Mr. Gendron.
Here.
Mr. Leary.
Here.
Ms. Martin.
Here.
Ms. Rossikowicz.
Here.
Five present, two absent.
Five present, two absent. First item in the agenda is the approval of the minutes for the regularly scheduled school committee meeting of Wednesday, July 16th. Questions, most want to approve by Ms. Rossikowicz, second one by Ms. Martin. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
And the opposed, that motion carries. Minutes are adopted. Next section of the agenda is permission to enter. Permission to enter. Adam Superintendent?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. To Middlesex Community College in the amount of $45,000 for tuition and acuplacer testing to qualified students from Lowell High School who earn both high school and college credit by taking courses at Middlesex Community College in the dual enrollment program. Funding will be provided by the school department budget dual enrollment programs. To Middlesex Community College in the amount of $35,000 to provide for violence prevention peer mediation program, SCORE. At Lowell High School, unto the auspices of Middlesex Community College Law Center, funding provided by the school department budget peer mediation programs. To Lowell Taekwondo in the amount of $24,000 to provide martial arts Taekwondo program to students attending the 21st Century After School and summer programming at the Maury, Greenwich, Shaughnessy, Lowell High, Robinson, Bartlett, McCullough, and Stoklosa Schools. Funding will be provided by the 21st Century Community Learning Center grant. To Lowell Parks and Conservation Trust in the amount of $24,000 to provide environmental and conservation education programs to students attending the 21st Century After School and summer programming at the Maury, Greenwich, Shaughnessy, Lowell High, Robinson, Bartlett, McCullough, and Stoklosa Schools. Funding provided through the 21st Century Community Learning Centers and Gateway Cities grant. To Education Incorporated in the amount of $50,000 to provide academic support and tutoring services to specialized special education students who are hospitalized. Funding will be provided by the Special Education Hospital Tutoring Account. To Seelin Chambers, MSCC SLP, in the amount of $6,000 to provide staff training, which will directly benefit teachers by improving their capacity to utilize specific assistive technology instruments for special education students. Funding provided by the school department budget Special Education Testing.
With approval by Ms. Martin, second by Mr. Leary. Discussion, roll call.
Mr. Conway, Mayor Elliott.
Yes.
Mr. Gendron.
Yes.
Mr. Leary.
Yes.
Ms. Martin.
Yes.
Ms. Rossikowicz.
Yes.
Ms. Scott. Five ayes, two absent, approved.
Next section of the agenda are memorials. There are, we have several memorials. The first one is for Ron Reese Rizzo, husband of Jane Rizzo, a former Varnum and Lincoln school teacher. Second one is for John Parasol, father-in-law of Jen Parasol, Moody School clerk, and Erika Anguillam, LPS tutor. Next one is for Pauline A. Keefe, mother of Mark Keefe, Lowell High School teacher, mother-in-law of Roberta Keefe, Moody School principal, and Suzanne Keefe, Lowell High School English Department Chair, grandmother of Kathleen Keefe, Lowell High School teacher, Megan Keefe Sullivan School Power Professional, and Courtney Keefe Bailey School teacher. Could we all please rise for a moment of silence in darkened chambers? May they rest in peace. We're going to the next section of the agenda. We have a motion by Mr. Conway, we have two motions by Mr. Conway. Motion to delay till the next meeting by Ms. Rossikowicz, second by Ms. Martin. All those in favor signify by saying aye, and the opposed, motion carries. Next item of the motion of the evening by Ms. Rossikowicz, requests superintendent to work with staff to post complete school supply list on the Lowell Public Schools website in advance of the start of school year to allow parents the opportunity to better prepare our students for the school year. Second by Mr. Gendron. Ms. Rossikowicz?
Thank you, Mayor. I actually came about this motion in my own search for a school list, a complete school list of supply, a list of school supplies for my own children returning to school this year. And astoundingly, I could come up with nothing. And what was provided at best at the end of the year was a, you know, a class-specific, say for ELA, a list of supplies for that particular class. So from year to year, the supplies that our kids need are pretty standard. We all know what those are. And it would be of great benefit to our children, to our families, to actually have those lists in advance, a complete list, so that parents can partner, better partner with us as a school district, to better prepare their kids for the start of school on day one. So that our kids are fully prepared on the first day of school for the rest of their academic year. I think it's sort of incumbent upon us to ensure, I mean, we always talk about, you know, preparing our kids and ensuring our kids are prepared for, you know, their, whatever challenge lies in front of them. However, we're not necessarily preparing our kids for that first day of school for the supplies that they need. Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Rossikowicz. Further discussion on this motion? All those in favor signify by saying aye, and the opposed, that motion carries. If we could just go back to, I did entertain a motion to delay those two motions, but after reading through them, they just, by Mr. Conway, they just asked for a report. So is there any objection that we take these up and send those to the superintendent rather than postpone to another two weeks? They just, they ask for simple reports. So no objection from the person, Ms. Martin, who made the second on the motion. We'll just withdraw the second and entertain a motion to approve both of these motions, request for reports by Mr. Leary, second by Ms. Martin. All those in favor signify by saying aye, and the opposed, motion carries. Thank you. Next motion of the evening by Ms. Martin, requesting a meeting of the personal subcommittee to discuss the process for implementing the superintendent's annual performance evaluation. Second by Ms. Rossikowicz. Ms. Martin?
Thank you very much, Mr. Mayor. As I had mentioned, I believe, at our last meeting, I warned everyone in advance that this was coming. I have made a request through the superintendent's office to begin polling so that we can come up with a date for the full committee to meet, to go over, that would be an open session meeting, to go over the process for evaluation. We do have a couple new members, so hopefully it will be helpful for us to all kind of go through the instrument so that we can all understand what the process for evaluation is. So I would make that in the form of a motion and request my colleagues' support.
Motion by Ms. Martin, second by Mr. Leary. All those in favor of the motion signify by saying aye.
Aye.
And those who oppose, that motion carries. Next motion of the evening by Mr. Leary, to recommend to the school committee adopt and implement the recommendation of the city Lowell Law Department pertaining to the hiring of family members in accordance with Master on Law, Chapter 71, Section 67. Second by Mr. Gendron. Mr. Leary?
Can I make a motion to defer my motion to the next meeting so everybody can be here to debate it? I look forward to having that exchanged, so I'd like to wait till September 3rd.
Motion to delay by Mr. Leary, second by Mr. Gendron, to delay to the next meeting. Discussion, all those in favor of the motion signify by saying aye, and the opposed, motion carries. Next section of the agenda, we have subcommittees. We have a policy subcommittee meeting. Report and approval of the minutes of the meeting of July 14th. Kim Scott, chairperson, she is not here. Motion to delay by Ms. Martin, second by Ms. Rossikowicz. All those in favor signify by saying aye, and the opposed, motion carries. Next report on the subcommittees, we have a technology subcommittee, report and approval of the minutes of the meeting of Monday, July 28th, 2014, by Chairman, Mr. Gendron.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Let me just pull up the minutes here. You caught me off guard, I didn't know we were moving that fast. Okay, we had a, we had a technology subcommittee a few weeks ago now, and in attendance were members of the committee, Ms. Martin, Mr. Leary, and myself, as well as Mr. Lang and Mr. Silver, the IT head. And Mr. Silver gave us an excellent presentation of the status of the technology department. Things are moving along very well, and we also brought up a couple of issues there. The first issue was the matter of a social media policy, a policy by which we will control what we deliver as a school system onto social media, meaning Facebook and on the websites. Mr. Silver delivered a policy proposal to us at the meeting, so we took it under advisement and decided that we would all review it as a committee and ask you all to take a look at it and review it and make comments and recommendations for the next meeting of the technology subcommittee. So no action needed at this point in time by the full, full school committee, but that's the status of that situation. The second issue was the matter of the web content managers. In the last school year, each school had a web content manager that was tasked with putting content onto the websites for their individual schools. And that's the, that's the data that we will use to project onto Facebook and other forms of social media, but it all stems from activities that happen at the schools. That, those positions, the funding for that position was taken out of the budget at our budget hearings and put into the suspense fund because we wanted to get more information about how those positions would be managed and how they can be more effective this time around. So Mr. Silver submitted to us a 10-point checklist that he would provide to each content manager. It's all in the Dropbox for you to review. That was a good list of tasks that each of those content managers should be managing on a regular basis. And we also, I think, the committee as a whole got the feeling that we're going to have much better oversight and much better monitoring of what happens with those positions going forward in the 2014-2015 school year. So we had a motion, Mr. Leary made a motion, second by Ms. Martin at the meeting, to recommend the full school committee transfer 62.5 from the suspense account back into the budget on the line item that supports these web content managers. So I'll offer that to the full committee for a vote at this time.
Second.
Recommend motion to transfer 62.5. Discussion? Ms. Rossikowicz?
I just have one comment. I'm glad to see that this is, this has really brought the attention of the technology subcommittee and also of the IT department. I think this is a, is a, is a very important communication tool for our families, and, you know, if the work's not being done, then other strategies need to be figured out. So hopefully, yes, they will be monitoring the progress and/or progress of the, of those, I'm sorry, progress of the population of those particular school site websites, because if not, actually, I will be. So I'm glad to see this moving forward. Thank you.
Thank you. So let me just repeat the motion a little bit more specifically. There's a motion to recommend, second by Mr. Leary, that 62,000 be transferred from the school committee suspense account to reinstate the school website contact manager for the 2014-2015 school year. Roll call.
Mr. Conway, Mayor Elliott.
Yes.
Mr. Gendron.
Yes.
Mr. Leary.
Yes.
Ms. Martin.
Yes.
Ms. Rossikowicz.
Yes.
Ms. Scott. Five ayes, two absent, approved.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Continuing with the report, and incidentally, we agreed on the web content managers to have a mid-year follow-up, so Mr. Silver's going to be providing us a follow-up right after Christmas showing us what progress has been made on those positions and on the content on the websites of each school. The other issue that we brought up at the meeting was with regard to Mr. Silver's request for some part-time technology positions. Another item that was in the budget when we reviewed it in the funding, which was 124.5, was moved to the suspense account, I'm sorry, 124.740, moved to the suspense account so that we could get, again, more information on what these part-time positions were all about. Mr. Silver gave a very, I think, impactful presentation showing us the overwhelming amount of work that his organization has to do in order to support all this technology that we're investing in so heavily across the city. The response time, he measures response time on each and every issue that's logged, and it ranges from, you know, half a day to sometimes 600 hours, which is, I don't know, Jim, what's that? That's, that's a lot of days, right? So it's a lot of time, and most of it is because they just can't get to it, not because the issues are that difficult to solve. So he wanted to bring on these part-time positions to help with the, you know, with the management of those, of those problems. The 11 positions, there'd be one for every two schools. So two schools would share one of these part-time folks who would help to address any technology matters that came up. Mr. Silver felt like he had a good applicant pool, a lot of university students looking for part-time work in the technology fields at UMass Lowell, are really interested in this type of position. He felt that it would make a good feeder system if at some point in time we wanted to expand our technology force, and we have these part-time folks, if some of them really show promise, it could be a pool from which we could hire new people knowing what we're getting before we invest in them. And also, he felt it was a very cost-effective way to get more help. We can, you know, because they're part-time, we can pay these folks a little bit less, and if they're college students, they're very happy with what they're getting paid. We don't have to pay benefits, there's no retirement and that sort of thing. So it seemed like a good way to get more feet on the street, more brains in the classrooms to help solve the technology issues that we have. And again, we're investing in technology. We're serious about making our school system among the best in the state when it comes to technology, but to do that, we need to, we need to support it. We need to support the teachers in the classrooms in making that happen. So I'll offer, we, Mr. Leary made a motion, second by Ms. Martin, at the meeting, to recommend to the full school committee that 124.7 be transferred from the school committee suspense account to fund 11 part-time computer repair technicians to service in elementary schools and middle schools for the 2014-2015 school year. I'll offer that as a motion.
Second.
Motion by Mr. Gendron, second by Mr. Leary, to recommend to transfer 124,740 dollars to be transferred from the school committee suspense account to fund 11 part-time computer repair technicians to service the elementary and middle schools during the 2014-2015 school year. Ms. Rossikowicz?
I just have one observation of this report, and, actually, a couple of questions. And so I would, I hope that moving forward, we would receive some updates from, from the technology department with regard to perhaps goals and outcomes, you know, what we, what we hope to achieve with adding in these 11 part-time positions. Is it, you know, a move to decrease our, our technology tickets by 50% over the course of one year? You know, are the number, you know, are those tickets broken down, you know, user error versus hardware issue? And, you know, if it's largely user error, then obviously, then there's a, there's a training component that needs to happen for our staff. So I hope that we can revisit this again. I know that obviously, we revisit this every single year with our budget, but I think it would be a benefit at the end of this, towards the end of the school year, that we sort of reflect back and see what kind of progress we made with folding in these 11 positions.
I think it makes sense, Mr. Mayor, if I could, that we add to the motion that at that mid-year point, we ask the technology director to give us an update of progress made as a result of these 11 part-time folks. Thank you.
No objection to the original motion, we'll just include that, I don't think we need to amend it. Mr. Leary?
Just, and I thought that's actually what we discussed at the committee meeting, to actually look at it even quarterly in terms of the performance. I think that's exactly why the presentation came in, to add the extra individuals. Some of the questions that the committee asked focused on, why don't we hire two full-time individuals instead? And I think that the, the issue that the director was pointing out, that a lot of the technology issues that are bogging people down are not high-level issues. And I think they answer the committee woman's concerns. A lot of these issues where the, where the individuals are going in, these are like 15-day waiting timeframes. So people are just getting frustrated and just simply not filing tickets. You have about, I think, 3,000 tickets a year that they're doing with eight people, which, if you're looking at the numbers and you're looking at any organization, we're not sufficiently staffed. I think as we get into this more, obviously, training and looking at different areas for smaller, like fixing the printer, might be able to be handled by somebody at some locations, but these folks coming in part-time will be able to handle that and then free up the people with a higher skill level to deal with the more complex problems. I think it's a good motion, I think it's good money, because you want people to be able to file these tickets because they have to be answered, really, in a day's timeframe, unless there's a significant issue that takes, you know, buying a new piece of equipment to, to actually fix the issue. If you're waiting any longer than a couple days, you might as well forget it, you lost that individual. It's not going to happen. And what that causes, it causes a breakdown in the ticket system. People are going to try to circumvent it by going, you know, trying to get, hey, can you do me a favor because I really need help? And that's not what you want to have. So it's imperative that we drive this down to a 24-hour timeframe. Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Leary. Further discussion? Roll call.
Mr. Conway, Mayor Elliott.
Yes.
Mr. Gendron.
Yes.
Mr. Leary.
Yes.
Ms. Martin.
Yes.
Ms. Rossikowicz.
Yes.
Ms. Scott. Five ayes, two absent, approved.
Motion carries.
That concludes the committee report, Mr. Mayor. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Entertained motion to accept the report and place on file by Ms. Rossikowicz, second by Ms. Martin. All those in favor signify by saying aye, and the opposed, motion carries, report is placed on file. Next report is the curriculum subcommittee report and approval of minutes of the meeting of Monday, August 11th, 2014, by Ms. Martin. Adam Chairperson.
Thank you very much, Mr. Mayor. The subcommittee did meet on August 11th. Present from the subcommittee were myself and Mr. Leary, and from the central office, Superintendent Franco, and Assistant Superintendent Abrams. We only had two items of discussion at this meeting. First was to review a request to conduct research in Lowell Public Schools. This request came from a student at the, at UMass's School of Graduate Education, doctoral candidate Catherine Covino. She's going to be, she's, she's been volunteering in our school, so she's familiar with the district, has worked particularly with one teacher who she'd like to continue working with. The topic of her study is around critical literacy, primarily around gender biases that, that happen in school environments, and really, her purpose is to lessen, taking this from her materials, lessen the school-based gender biases that currently exist, and to foster gender equality in all of our early elementary school reading classrooms. So an interesting study, she has been made well aware of all of the criteria around confidentiality and has met all of those, all of those criteria. So a motion was made to move forward to approve this research study, and I would, I believe the full committee needs to vote on it. So I'd put that forward in the form of a motion to approve this request.
Motion by Ms. Martin, second by Ms. Rossikowicz. Further discussion on the motion? Further discussion on the motion? Roll call.
Mr. Conway, Mayor Elliott.
Yes.
Mr. Gendron.
Yes.
Mr. Leary.
Yes.
Ms. Martin.
Yes.
Ms. Rossikowicz.
Yes.
Ms. Scott. Five ayes, two absent, approved.
Thank you very much. Our second topic were the parent brochures that we distribute at the beginning of each school year and at the different, at the trimester and the quarter marks, based on elementary versus middle school. The curriculum office did present us with some samples. We were able to review those, make, we made a few suggestions. I do think that it's a great first pass at it for people at home, parents and families. It is available on the website, so that you can go onto the website and review the, review the brochures as they stand right now. They're in the Curriculum Instruction and Assessment Office section of the website. We, as the committee reviewed it, I think that we are confident that we're getting closer to what we want this document to be. I think we may have some additional changes before we get to the second iteration over the course of the school year. It really is, I think, meant to be an effort to ensure that what we're distributing, both electronically and as a physical brochure, are in a format that parents can very easily read, be able to understand, and be able to use the document to help their, their children as they go through their course of study in the Lowell Public Schools. So as I said, I appreciate the efforts of the curriculum office, I know that this is a big challenge. And we're asking for literally reams and reams of paper to be boiled down into a one-page piece. So it's a very real challenge, but I appreciate their efforts. I do think we're getting close. And what I, what we discussed at the subcommittee moving forward is that once this piece goes out at the beginning of the year, we're going to get parent feedback so that we can kind of make any changes with specific information from the people who need to use this document, which I think is going to be the best, the best way for us to ensure that this is a document that, that families find helpful. So I would report that as a, as a report of progress, and that would conclude the minutes from the curriculum meeting.
Thank you, Madam Chairperson. Further question or discussion on the report? Motion to accept the report as a report of progress and place on file by Mr. Gendron, second by Mr. Leary. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
And the opposed, motion is accepted and placed on file. Still on the subcommittees, we have another subcommittee report, Student Support Services Subcommittee meeting, report and approval of the minutes of the meeting of Wednesday, July 16th, by Ms. Rossikowicz. Madam Chairperson?
Thank you. We actually reported out on this the last session, so I would just move to, submit as a report of progress.
Motion by Ms. Rossikowicz, second by Ms. Martin, to accept the report as a report of progress and place on file. All those in favor of the motion signify by saying aye.
Aye.
And the opposed, minutes are adopted and placed on file. Next section of the agenda, we have reports of the superintendent. Item 17, legal opinion on nepotism policy. Madam Superintendent?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. I, I don't know if it's the wish of the committee to, again, defer this to the next meeting as, as our members are not all present.
Motion to defer by Ms. Rossikowicz, second by Ms. Martin, to defer this to the next meeting. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
And the opposed, that motion carries, and we'll delay that to the next meeting. Item number 18, Middlesex Community College funds request. Madam Superintendent?
Yes, thank you, Mr. Mayor. Mr. Lang is, has submitted a report to me that there is a request for Middlesex Community College to increase the allocation for the bridge program that is conducted by Middlesex Community College to add $26,000 to the actual contract, to make the contract to go from $842,630 to $868,630. Middlesex Community College has stated that it is difficult for them to maintain capacity with costs and staff increases and whatnot over time, and have, have told me through Mr. Lang that at this particular time, we would have to cut down the number of students in the particular program, and so we brought it for your review and any questions you may have.
Mr. Gendron? Oh, I'm sorry, Ms. Rossikowicz. Okay.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Madam Superintendent, I think it would, would be a good idea, much the way we asked the UTEC folks to come in here and give us a update and a summary on what they're doing with their program, to ask Middlesex Community College to do the same for the bridge program. And with that, I'd like to see statistics about, you know, how many students are serviced and, and what the success rate is and that sort of thing. So I would offer that to the committee as, as a recommendation, to ask them to come in maybe at the next meeting or sometime in September to review that.
Madam Superintendent?
Yes, thank you, Mr. Mayor. Protocol-wise, many times, I would go back to the Subcommittee of Student Support Services, but according to the Lowell Committee, we could certainly bring them to the whole meeting, or we could refer to, to the Student Support Services Subcommittee meeting. I, I accept your recommendation.
Mr. Gendron, what is, what is your desire?
Well, you know, it doesn't matter to me. I think it might be nice to do it for the full committee. I think, you know, also, the, the public is more apt to see it then, and I just think it might be a good idea in this case. And I just think it might be a good idea in this case. It's a pretty fair, you know, amount of money that we are investing in that program. So I think it would be good for the full committee to see it. Doesn't matter, mean we couldn't do it at both the Subcommittee and the full committee. Maybe a more detailed presentation to the Subcommittee if that's the wish of the Subcommittee. But, you know, I'd certainly like to see them here some night.
Great, that's how we'll go.
Okay. So.
So would it make sense to delay action on this transfer until we do that? Is that going to severely impact the program, Madam Superintendent? Or what's your, what are your thoughts?
I believe that the program is going to be, to begin at this particular point. I don't know if Mr. Lang has more details as it was presented directly to Mr. Lang, so I'm going to ask him if he has more insight.
Can I ask where this money would be coming from?
It would be, it would have to be a fund, excuse me, at this point in time, like a fund transfer from the suspense account to pay for that. Middlesex had, just as way of background, and we can certainly invite them to the next meeting like we did the other group to do a presentation. They must have recently settled some contracts. And they run the bridge program for us. And basically, the direct costs of operating the program for both staff salaries and benefits get passed back to us. So when they were putting their program budget together for the year, we had for the last two years actually just level funded them. And they reached out this year and said, you know, they've tried to make it work, but they just can't given the contractual increases they were facing. I mean, the program is set to start next week. I think if we perhaps invited them to come to the, that first meeting in September and give a presentation, I think the annual report is just about ready as well. That might answer some questions. So I think we could delay this for the two weeks.
So I'd make the motion then that we delay action on the transfer until the September 3 meeting when we get the, Middlesex Community College to give us an update.
Motion to delay by Mr. Gendron, second by Mr. Leary. All those in favor of the motion signify by saying aye. And the opposed? This is, this motion has passed and we'll delay this item until the next meeting. Next item is number 19, Appointment to the CREST Board. Madam Superintendent?
Yes, thank you. The Collaborative for Regional Educational Services and Training. CREST is the new name for what you have known as GLAC, the Greater Lawrence Education Collaborative. They are our local special education collaborative. Since 2011, Commissioner Chester mandated that the people who sit on the advisory board or the governing board for that particular entity needed to be superintendent of schools or a school committee member as elected by the committee. I am happy to continue serving in that role, but I am also happy to have anybody step in my place if that is the wish of the committee. We need a vote of the committee and the minutes to make it official for your review.
Mr. Mayor, I nominate the superintendent to continue in this capacity.
Second.
Motion by Ms. Martin, second by Mr. Gendron, that we appoint the superintendent to continue in this capacity and fill that position. Roll call.
Mr. Conway, Mayor Elliott?
Yes.
Mr. Gendron?
Yes.
Mr. Leary?
Yes.
Ms. Martin?
Yes.
Ms. Rossikowicz?
Yes.
Ms. Scott. Five yeas, two absent, approved.
Motion approved. Next item, number 20, we have June Early Release. Madam Superintendent?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. We have uncovered a dilemma in our release day and we wanted to bring this on earlier rather than later. The last day of school is slated for the 11th of, the 11th of June, if we have no snow days. We can only wish. However, we found that there is an issue with that particular release day. So because we're not sure of when the last day of school will be, it can be as early as the 10th, we know we have to move it. It's against science. It's the, it's the night of graduation at Lowell High School, so it's going to be difficult for the high school. And I apologize for the error. However, I was, in speaking to principals and actually parents over time, my recommendation would be to move that to whenever the last day of school is, to make it a release day for children. But of course, the staff would be there continuing the work. If families had questions, they could go to the school with the staff still there. There's so much transition work. It's just, since we don't know if the next week we would schedule that and we would, may or may not have school, that's the recommendation that I'm making this evening for your review.
Okay, further discussion on the side? Move to approve by Ms. Rossikowicz, second by Ms. Martin. Roll call.
Mr. Conway, Mayor Elliott?
Yes.
Mr. Gendron?
Yes.
Mr. Leary?
Yes.
Ms. Martin?
Yes.
Ms. Rossikowicz?
Yes.
Ms. Scott. Five yeas, two absent, approved.
Motion carries. Next item is item number 21, Summer Leadership. Madam Superintendent?
Yes, thank you all. This report is the annual report that we just give you an update last week on Wednesday, Thursday, I'm sorry, Tuesday, Wednesday and Thursday. All of the administrators in Lowell Public Schools, principals, assistant principals, middle management, all got together for leadership over time. We really started that early look at the embargo data, which we were able to look at, trying to find trends in, in the work and what we have to work at on as a system. We have attached the agenda for all, but we really looked at district data. What are we working with? Then the why. Why is this happening? And then what is going to happen as a result? So we established a central focus for all schools, which all the goals of the principals as well as this team will be based on student achievement, who, what's the progress? And I can go into the details, but I will tell you that it was a very labor-intensive week just for us to look at the data and what the beginning trends are, which we'll share with the committee as soon as that information is not, of course, embargoed. I think it's the first week of September when that becomes public information. But attached here, you will see the agendas for the particular weeks, looking at what is progress, how much progress should children be making? And why are we having these dilemmas? And going into that whole root cause analysis, which we've reviewed over time, when you go deep into the purposes, why, and which subgroups of children or which groups of children in general are making adequate progress from all levels, whether it's a high-achieving student or a student who may be very new to the country for a variety of reasons. So focus again on achievement and outcomes. And I will be meeting with principals within the next three weeks to determine what are the school goals as based as the district goals. So that's the beginning of the work that we have established this year. And Mr. Conway's asking for a few more details, so I'll include them for the next meeting in his motion. This year, we were fortunate enough to have had this at the Lowell Community Health Center. They were very generous in allowing us to use their space. And it was really a very nice beginning, very professional forum that we had with our staff. And I welcome any questions you may have.
Thank you, Madam Superintendent. Discussion, questions? Motion to accept the report of progress placed on file by Mr. Gendron, second by Mr. Leary. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, motion carries. Next item, item number 22, Summer School Report. Madam Superintendent?
Yes, thank you, Mr. Mayor. This is the annual report. According to my mathematics, there are 1,596 students that are accounted for in this particular report on 12 different sites. This is a combination of the summer school programs where children either regain credit at Lowell High School or if they have had academic, attend academic issues in middle school or have been absent over the policy-stated day, 16 to 26 days. Additionally, as we've grown over time, these are all the 21st century programs that were, that were afforded to us through the grants in the city. There was a substantial ELL grant that is referred to here. So you will see the cause and what happened in those particular summer schools. If there are any questions, I welcome them.
Thank you for that update. Discussion on the report. Madam, Ms. Martin?
Thank you. Just to follow up, and there's obviously a difference between the 21st century, you know, endeavors and then the others that are focused on the ELL and some of the other, you know, provisional support programs. My question would be, I know in the past, we've had the opportunity to have data that supports kind of the dramatic impact that our summer schools have had. I know it's something I've always been impressed with, that, you know, you could have students, and I would think it would be particularly telling in the ELL programming, who could make up a whole year, you know, looking at a pre-test and a post-test, that having that summer school experience can really have a dramatic impact. I don't see that in this report. I don't know if it's something that we might be able to maybe come back with. Because I think it's, it's one of the things that for me always really gave us really solid data about what the investment in summer school could accomplish. And again, recognizing that the 21st century stuff is not necessarily in the same caliber, may not have the kind of pre and post testing that the others, the more academically focused ones would. But if we could get that, request that information for our next meeting, that would be great.
Thank you, Ms. Martin. Mr. Gendron?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. My comments were along the same lines as Ms. Martin with regard to measuring the success of summer school and the, and the value of summer school. I'd really like to see some information on that. I have gotten reports in the past that summer school is not that effective in Lowell, that a lot of times because students who have failed and are sort of being forced to go to summer school, you know, make it a difficult situation at times and make it an ineffective program. So I'd like to see, you know, if there's data that either supports or doesn't support that. And if that, that is the case in some, or some part of our summer school programming, what can we do about it? So that, that'd be something I'd like to see in the future.
Thank you, Mr. Gendron. Further discussion? All those in favor of a motion to accept the report as a report of progress placed on file?
So moved.
By Mr. Gendron, second by Ms. Martin. All those in favor signify by saying aye. And the opposed? Motion carries. Next, next item under Reports of the Superintendent. McAvene School Coaching Recommendation. Madam Superintendent?
Yes, thank you, Mr. Mayor. This is a proactive request to increase the math coaching at the McAvene School. And if anybody's wondering, our principal and assistant principal from McAvene are here in the, in the chamber in case there may be any questions. As we began to look at the embargo data, we started looking at schools, we really want to put some work. And there's been substantial amount of work with C-TAC being at the McAvene School for us to build culture, for us to build the learning. But we really know that in the schools that have the most need for improvement, we have tried to increase the math coaching to full-time. We already have across the system literacy coaches full-time in every school. And so we met with Principal Vasconcelos and assistant principal and our coordinators and against assistant superintendent, Mr. Lang. And so in looking at how we could fund a change like this, Ms. Vasconcelos went back to say, is there any ability for us to make up the difference for the half-time math resource teacher? And the recommendation after we all spoke was that one paraprofessional position would be moved to cover that half-time teacher position at the McAvene School. So that would allow them to have the math coaching, the real focus on the data on a full-time basis, not shared with another school. And because of their status and what we're thinking as a district, it will be a school that needs that extra support. So I am putting that out for us to change that one position, which is not a filled position. No one will be losing a job over it. It's just going to be a shifting of her paraprofessional assistants to be able to enable to have that position. So that is what we're bringing forward for your review and approval.
Thank you, Madam Superintendent. Questions on this report? Mr. Gendron?
So, so the motion would be to take a paraprofessional position that's currently in the budget?
Yes.
And just basically take the same amount of funding and allocate it towards a math coach?
That's correct.
I'll put that in the form of a motion, Mr. Mayor, that we transfer one paraprofessional position to math coach at the McAvene School.
Motion by Mr. Gendron, second by Mr. Leary, to support the transfer of one paraprofessional position to observe the cost of additional half-time math resource teacher. Further discussion? Roll call.
Mr. Conway, Mayor Elliott?
Yes.
Mr. Gendron?
Yes.
Mr. Leary?
Yes.
Ms. Martin?
Yes.
Ms. Rossikowicz?
Yes.
Ms. Scott. Five yeas, two absent, approved.
Next report on the report of the superintendent is List of Eligible Teachers. Madam Superintendent?
Yes, Mr. Mayor, thank you. This is the monthly update of the August 20, list of eligible teachers for your review and approval.
Further discussion on the report? Motion to accept the report as a report of progress by Ms. Martin, second by Ms. Rossikowicz. All those in favor of the motion signify by saying aye. And the opposed? Motion carries. The list of eligible teachers is adopted. Next item under 25 is a Personnel Report. Madam Superintendent?
Yes, again, Mr. Mayor, this is the monthly update of retirements, resignations and new hires and promotions within the Lowell Public Schools to begin school next Tuesday.
Thank you, Madam Superintendent. First, further questions? Discussion on the Personnel Report. Motion to approve by Mr. Leary, second by Mr. Gendron, to accept the report and place on file. All those in favor of the motion signify by saying aye. And the opposed? That motion carries. Next item, item number 26, Home Education. Madam Superintendent?
Yes, thank you, Mr. Mayor. The following parents are requesting permission to home educate their child. Jonathan and Deanna Capaldo will be requesting to educate their, their children. There will be 28 families that are home educated and the total number of children will be 43 in the Lowell Public Schools.
Move of approval?
Move of approval by Mr. Gendron, second by Ms. Rossikowicz. All, roll call.
Mr. Conway, Mayor Elliott?
Yes.
Mr. Gendron?
Yes.
Mr. Leary?
Yes.
Ms. Martin?
Yes.
Ms. Rossikowicz?
Yes.
Ms. Scott. Five yeas, two absent, approved.
That concludes reports, reports of the superintendent. Next item under New Business, Accept Donation from MACOM Technology Solutions. Move to approve by Ms. Martin, second by Mr. Leary. Roll call.
Mr. Conway, Mayor Elliott?
Yes.
Mr. Gendron?
Yes.
Mr. Leary?
Yes.
Ms. Martin?
Yes.
Ms. Rossikowicz?
Yes.
Ms. Scott. Five yeas, two absent, approved.
Next item, we have Convention slash, oh, I'm sorry, Ms. Rossikowicz.
I just, I'm sorry, I just have a quick question. Will there be a letter going out in, in, in thanks to MACOM for this very generous donation?
Madam Superintendent?
Our standard practice is to always, after you approve receiving, for us to send the letter out to the, the community and then we include it in the communication. So yes.
Excellent, thank you.
Thank you. Moving on to Convention Conference Requests. Number 28, we, request to send 18 to 30 Lowell High School students along with five chaperones, Margaret Kennedy White, David Casey, Lisa McHugh, Roberta Fillmore and Thomas Thornton, all LHS staff, to travel to Paris, the French Rivier in Rome on June 19 through the 28, 2015. There will be no cost to the Lowell Public Schools or to Lowell High School Individual Fund. Travel expenses for chaperone will be covered by EF Tours. No school will be missed, no substitutes will be needed. Move to approve, Ms. Martin?
Certainly, I'd make a motion to approve. I just want to say it's, it's great to see a big trip back in the, in the mix. I know it's been a few years since we've had kind of a, you know, big adventure for our students as an option. So congratulations and thanks to the, the staff who've made this happen. And as it stretches out before us, I hope we have a lot of students who are able to take advantage of it.
Exactly. Move to approve by Mr. Gendron, second by Ms. Martin. Roll call.
Mayor, Mr. Conway, Mayor Elliott?
Yes.
Mr. Gendron?
Yes.
Mr. Gendron?
Yes.
Mr. Leary?
Yes.
Ms. Martin?
Yes.
Ms. Rossikowitz?
Yes.
Ms. Scott. Five yeas, two absent, approved.
Next item, under Communications, we have a letter from the Commissioner of Department of Elementary, Elementary and Secondary Education, Mitchell D. Chester. Move to accept the communication and place on file. Ms. Ross, by Ms. Rossikowitz, seconded by Ms. Martin. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
And the opposed? Motion carries. Next, we have, excuse me, another communication, letter to Senator Warren and Congresswoman Songas regarding support of newcomer students. Motion to accept the report and place on file. Madam Superintendent?
Yes, in researching the cost of newcomers students, there's also been a report that has been forwarded to the Lowell City Council, because that was one of the motions on that particular board. I also wanted to let you know that I did send this to our delegation, the information that I had shared with Senator Warren, as well as Congresswoman Songas, just so we could get all the people on the topic of what it's costing for this educational upgrade for the kids who need the extra support systems. So, I don't, I believe that the City Council is going to be reviewing it soon, but it's the same information that you have here, just with a little more about what Title III gives, which is about $175 per student. So, that's the only additional funding you get, but I did want to make Representatives mangle and golden, as well as Senator Donahue, aware of it, because they're the front lines for us, and they're always, always advocating. So, that's what, I sent it on to them as well.
Mr. Leary?
First of all, thank you for being proactive with it. I think now we need to really follow up in the next few weeks with phone calls, 'cause I think this is something we need to really jump on. I think it's a great idea to involve the, the delegation, and I think it's great the City Council's working on it as well. Thank you, Madam Superintendent.
Intend a motion to accept, to accept the, the letters, approve the letters and place on file by Mr. Gendron, seconded by Ms. Rossikowitz. All those in favor signify by saying aye. And the opposed? Motion passes. Having no further business before the committee, intend a motion to adjourn by Mr. Gendron, seconded by Mr. Leary.